Self-awareness to become divinely self-conscious, free, infinite and immortal. In this journey ignorance and limitation as are imposed on life at every step by matter. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. In the spirit and matter on may purul sadapurul. I have seen two different levels. The Lord has said that there is no fundamental reality in these different levels. This is a path of the mind. Because the spirit and matter are all one soul. Two ends of the same substance, the same substance of the same god. That is the substance, the one soul, the other soul. Then there is one soul. Therefore, that is not possible. The matter is the understanding of the truth. That is the reason for the sadapurul. Why? In the sadapurul. See a different level. Seeing a different level. The consciousness of the level is lost. The sadapurul. Sadapurul is a god. One's heart, a heart. It is the heart of the soul. However, it is not possible. To do anything. To understand. Sadapurul is a sadapurul. That is the ignorance of the sadapurul. The. However, if the sadapurul is an understanding. Seeing it. What is the reality? The lost consciousness. It is missing. At the beginning of the war. It is missing. The sadapurul is seen in the consciousness. In the consciousness. In the consciousness. The consciousness. It is seen in the consciousness. However, not only that. The consciousness. It is seen. The other consciousness. It is forgotten. It is forgotten. The other consciousness. However, in this life. What is it? The sadapurul. Ignorance and limitation. Understanding. A soul. This is the two different levels. This life. The consciousness. The consciousness. This is the difference. The sadapurul. This war. In any level. This is the difference. It is necessary to make it. Let us read the next one.
Read it madam. The bondage of matter to mechanic law results in a colossal inertia which is the second fundamental opposition. Matter offers to spirit. Matter is under colossal inertia and it opposes to all that seeks to liberate from it. Matter though joined in its scale of operations is rigidly chained by a fixed mechanic law which is imposed on it. When life awakes in matter, it imposes its power on physical form and material force. When mind awakes in life, it uses its knowledge to impose its own freer law and self-guiding action upon material things. Material nature seems to yield to the working of life and mind upon it. Matter cooperates with them reluctantly only after a struggle and only up to a certain point. Beyond this point, it presents an obstinate inertia, obstruction and negation. Life is bound to narrowness and death. Mind is subject to deviation and error and grossness of the material life instincts. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. In the. Sadapurul. See. A different sadapurul. Sadapurul. It is the difference. What is it? A man. Colossal inertia. Colossal inertia. A sadapurul. A sadapurul. Everything is mechanical. If it is a different. This is the difference. Sadapurul. The second. The second question. Why? The matter. How is it? It is a man. It is. Therefore, it is. It is. See. A Brahma. It is. A different. This is the difference. It is. It is. Sadapurul. Therefore, it is. It is. It is. This. War. The god. Sadapurul. What is it? Sadapurul. It is. War. The idea. It is. It is. The god. The life force. What is it? It is. Sadapurul. It is. Physical form and physical form and material force. It is. The war. A thought. Like. Man. It is. War. It is. It is. The man. The understanding. Knowledge. What is it? It is. This is. The idea. It is. Sadapurul. It is. Sadapurul. The war. Man. These two levels. It is. What is it? This war. War. It is. The two gods. Sadapurul. It is. Sadapurul. It is. The man. War. The. Damage. It is. However, it is. A. It is. The man. It is. In any place. It is. Not only that. War. The idea. The man. It is. It is. The man. This. A. A. This is. It is. War. The man. It is. What is it? War. The man. It is. It is. Man. It is. The man. Sadapurul. It is. This inertia. It is. What is it? It is. A deviation. The man. It is. A path. Man. What is it? This sadapurul. Material life instincts. That is. The. This is. Man. It is. However, they. This. Sadapurul. This grossness. This inertia. It is. The man. It is. The Lord has said. Let us see. One. The. Any word. The Lord has said. Three words. Let us see. This chapter. Any word. The man. The Lord has said. Ignorance. This inertia. Division and struggle. These three words. The man. The man. The brain. The brain. These three words. The damage. Let us read the next two.
Read it madam. The third fundamental opposition matter offers to spirit is the principle of division and struggle. Though in reality, matter is indivisible, divisibility is its whole basis of action. Only two methods by which union is possible. Either through the aggregation of units or an assimilation of one unit by another. Both these methods admit the principle of eternal division, admitting the constant possibility and the ultimate necessity of dissociation and dissolution. Both presuppose as the condition of world existence, a constant struggle of the divided units with each other. The vital principle life when manifesting its activities in matter take this as the basis only for all its activities. It has to accept the law of death, desire and limitation and undergo that constant struggle to devour processes dominate which we have seen as the first aspect of life. When the mental principle manifests in matter, it has to work within the rigid mold and material of matter. The mind always seeks knowledge but is unable to secure its knowledge on firm basis. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam. The third. Sadapurul. Principle of division and struggle. The principle of division and struggle. The. 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 It is. Therefore, the Lord has said. Principle of division and struggle. And. The. Why? Sadapurul. The. That is. A need. Therefore, it is. It is. Every time. Every time. However, it is. The. The. A. This is. How? The Lord has said. One word. Aggregation of units. This is. The second. One word. Take. Assimilation of one unit by another. These two levels. What is it? Every time. The. The. Words. It is. Why? This is. This. It is. It is. Dissociation and dissolution. These two. Levels. Every time. Like. This. These two levels. Every time. One word. One word. These two. This. This word. Every time. One word. Concept. It is. The real unity. It is. However, this aggregation or association. It is. It is. It is. It is. The Lord has said. Because. This is. Matter. Material level. These two words. Therefore, the real unity. It is. The Lord has said. This is. Every time. The man. The man. The man. Why? This is. It is. The Lord has said. This is. The war. Vital principle. This is. This is. Sadapurul. Why? It is. It is. Like. One. When. One. Different. It is. Like. War. The. One. Sadapurul. This. This. The war. Every time. It is. One. One. Like. One. The. This is. The. However, the man. It is. But. It is. First aspect of life. What is it? Sadapurul. The division and struggle. This is. Not only that. A man. Sadapurul. The man. This sadapurul. A. A. Therefore, the man. The. The. A. A. Every time. A man. A. It is. A. A. This man. War. What is it? Sadapurul. Sadapurul. Division and struggle. It is. Next. Two. Do you need?
In the. In the. Chapter. In the particular section. I had a question also. You. One. The death is one as a means and other as a condition of life. You say.
Yes.
It is.
Now.
You remember that?
Ah.
Both methods repose. The disassociation and dissolution.
Yes.
Both methods repose on death, one as means and other as condition of life. You say. It is. Clarity.
Okay, okay. The life. Chapter. The life. The Lord has said. This life. It is. It is. The. The. Therefore, the man. What is. Man. Two ways. One. War. The. Another. So, it is. Means of life. Man. War. It is. Death. The Lord has said. This. The. What is it? The. Limitations. Why? You ask. Why? This. The. Division and struggle. It is. Therefore, the war. 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 Therefore, the death is a means. A way. Like. A war. It is. The death is a condition. Death. Because. Death. A. Therefore, it is. Death as a means for the life to prolong. Death is an indispensable condition for life. The Lord has said. As means and condition. When. Means and condition. Matter. We. Transform. Death. Matter. Transform. Matter. As long as matter is subject to division and struggle. Death. Therefore, death. As a means. Death as a condition. As a means now. A way. War. Death. Like. Death. An. As a condition.
Hmm hmm. Okay, okay.
This is. The Lord has said.
Ah, correct, correct, okay.
Read it madam.
Ah, read it madam.
The law of pain and suffering is imposed on the vital and mental existence by the ignorance, inertia and division of matter because the mental consciousness is not entirely ignorant. Cannot remain satisfied in some shell of custom and remain unaware of its own ignorance. The vital sentience sense perception emerging in matter is not entirely inert, not satisfied with its own unconscious limited existence. They are aware of the infinite consciousness, infinite power and immortal existence in which they live as part of and yet separated from it.
And. And. Matter. The vital sentience emerging in matter is. Spelling mistake.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Life becomes only self-conscious in man. The unavoidable struggle and effort of his vital existence, aspiration of his mental existence, amazed ignorance, inertia and division of matter reach their peak in man and he begins to feel the pain and discord of the world. Man may quiet himself by seeking to be satisfied with his limitations or confined. or confine his struggles only to the extent of gaining some mastery over this material world in which he lives. But here too man only meets with his with his limitations. Whatever great results he can achieve remain inconclusive. He tries to go beyond. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. In the material level erkakkodiya indha moondru sikkalhal ignorance inertia and division. Idu avandhu enna karanathirkaaha valiyayum vedanayum erpadathavendum. Pa- adipadala adu than keelvayarikindradhu. Indha amsangal sadanilela erikkindran. Adu unmai. Anaal sadanilela irukkakoodayanam samgal edhanala avandhu valiyayum vedanayum evaar erpaditikindradhu. Adarkaanakaranathitha than indha bahavaninga kuripadikindrar. Adarku oru mukkiamana karanam ennamenral? Oru manadanudiyandha mental consciousness adu yandhu muruvadumana ariyamaili kadeyadu sadapurul ariyamaila erikkindradhu unmai. Anaal oru manadanudiyandha mental consciousness mental consciousness enbadu sadapurallilirundhu vaarvui vaarvilirundhu manamindranile irukkakoodayanam unarvunile. Andha nilegalavandhu adu avandhu muruvadumana andha ariyamaili illai. Adhalal adu avandhu oru parakkathirku utpatta oru kattupattirku adhanala irukkamudiyavadu illai. Parakkathirku utpatta kattupadabdina andha sadapurulai saarundha andha ariyamai kul adhanala eporudumme irukkamudiyavadu irukkamudiyavadu illai. Adhey pola thanudiyadhivayamayay adu unandhrukkindradhu. Adu than mukkiamana karanam inga. Idu avandhu manadanukkondradha onrudaan yena bahavaninga kuripaduvadu the mental consciousness mental consciousness endru bahavan kuripaduvadu manadan. The manidharukmaatharnanandha sirappu erikkindradhu. Manadamda thanudiyadhivayamayay than unandh unarakkoodayanam andha vaip andhatthiran manadanukkamattunthanavundu idu avandhu vairindha jeevarasiyakum kadeyadu. Adhanala manadan idhey unandhrukkindran adhanala avanala avandhu andharayurayana andha avanudiyadhivayail avan triptipaduvadu illai. Eporudumme aday kandhusella mayarchikindra. Ah var mayarchikambodhu enna nadakindradhu enral andha pain and suffering varikindradhu. Idu oru karanam idu avandhu oru manadanudiyamanam saarundhanilela. Irandaavudhu oru manadanudiyandha vital sentience pranamaynile vaarvusarundhanile sense perception. Aduvam patho abdina? Adu avandhu oru harayurayana oru ah varambukutpatta andha vaarvirkku kattupattiruppa kattupattirupadarku aduvum iruppadilla adu triptiyadivadu illai. Enna karanam abdina? Adukkondhu oru adipadayana karanam inga bahavan kooruvadu enna karanam enral? Ye nontha mari vaarvui ah oru adirtiyadhandenile sadanile sadapurulakutpatte irukkavendum. Enna karanam abdina? The vaarvui enbadu unmaileya thanudiyam moolam edan patho abdina? Indha sakchidanandavil irukkakoodiya andha chitsakti consciousness force. Adu than vaarvin sakthiaha inge sayalpadikindradhu. So adhanudiyam moolam patho abdina? Adu avandhu oru iraitthamayavainthadhu adiyathanmayavainthadhu oru ellayatra sakthiyay kondadhu. Ellayatra unarvunile ellayatra sakthi idellam avandhu adhanudiyadipadayam sam. Atthaya amsangalay konda adu vaarvui sadapurulakutpatte oru kuripitta varambukutpatte irupadhi adu virmuvadu illai. Adhanala than avandhu indha pain and suffering indha irandhu wa- irandhu ah nilegal indha manamindran ramipoom sari vaarvui enginra ramipoom sari indha sadapurallinul la indha amsangalirundhu vidipatte vara vidupattava mayarchikindran. Adhanala than avigala nam oru manadanenkinranilela adu avandhu itthaya itthaya mayarchi meelongi kaanappadumpodhu avanukku valiyum vedanayum avan adahindran. Idu oru karthu. Adathu avandhu the manamindranile manadanenkinranile avandha perugu manadanenbahavan oru murumayana oru unarvunile adayindha oru nileyl avan erikkindran. Indha sadapurulai saarundha andha ariyami mandhanile periupattunile idarku edhiraaha avanudiyavvaarvum sari avanudiy manoddalathay saarunda andha aarvum. Ivigal ellamme avandhu ah oru porattanilela erikkindran yena indha indha oru thadaya oru edhunile edhunmarayana nilegal sadapurulai saarunda indha edhunmarayana amsangalirundhu avigal vidupattu meelnokkiyada mayarchikindran oru manadanudiyay oru manadanenkinranile avanudiyavvaarvaha arukattum manamaha arukattum. Idellamme avandhu indha varambugalilirundhu vidupattim meelnokki sella mayarchikindran. Indha mayarchikindradha manadanenkinranile avanukku avandhu indha valiyay valiyum sari indha oru muranbadugal. Ivayellam avandhu manadanenkinranile avandhu avanukku avandhu meelongi unarikindran. Anaal manadan avandhu oralavu thantha indha mayarchi laavandhu oralavu avandhu ah oru sadapurulai thanne saandhulla andha sadavulaku adhalin adhalmedhu oralavu avan thanudiyaaalimayeselathi ah oralavu avanukku avandhu oru tripti adahindran. Ah adhanmamaha oru triptayum amaythayum avan adahindran. Anaal avan ennadhan andha nileyadindhalam kodha avan varambukutpatte than sayalpadu sayalpadavandi valay sayalpadavandi niley ingdu orikkindradhu. Ennadhan avan maaviram ah avanudiyamayarchikindmoolamaha oru vilavigalay avan adindhalam sari avanudiyallam mayarchigalamme oru mudiviparadhanilela than erikkindradhu. Adhalal manadanudiyamayarchi eporudumme evaar erikkindradhendral? Eporudumme than irukkakoodiyanileli irundhu kandhusella vendum indha undudalil than manadan erikkindran. Enna karanam enral? Manadanenbahavan than indha sadapurallilirukkakoodayanam andha moondru vidhigalinudiyabadhippe avanudiyavvaarvin nilegalilim sari avanudiyamanonaleilim sari avan meelongi unarikindran. Matthajeevarasiyakal andha badhippe unarvadillai. Manadanavandhu andha nilegalilirundhu vidupada mayarchipadhal avanudiyabadhippe unaravam meelongi unarikindran. Adhanala avan valiyayum vedanayum andha valiyayum vedanayum adharkavigalakutpadikindran manadan. Andha badhippakkum manadan than adhiyamutpadikindran enginra karthi bahavan inga kuripadikindrar. Adath
Padikittum ma sir?
Ah padigam.
The apparently finite being in man feels himself to be really an infinite. Ah he merely feels the presence of an infinite its impulse and stirring within him. He can never be satisfied till the infinite is possessed by him and he is possessed by it. He is the first being on earth who becomes dimly aware of the divine presence in him and his immortality and his need of immortality. The principle of rigid division from which matter has started affects the man throughout in his physical, emotional and mental levels. Each individual is shut up in his own personal and egoistic consciousness of separate and limited mind, life and body. This separateness prevents what would be otherwise the natural law of our development. Each one feels his body different from the other body. It brings into a body the law of attraction and repulsion. The body is subject to the law of discord and pain. Each body feels itself exposed to the attack and forceful impacts of other such limited conscious forces of universal forces. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. Indha manadanudiyah ah manadanudiyah manoddalathalim sari avanudiyaudal saarundhanileilim sari avanudiyavvaarvusarundhanileilim sari. The sadapurallinudaya indha moondru amsangal edhunnelayana amsangal. The ignorance inertia division and struggle. Indha amsangal nalai indha badhippe manadan than unarikindran. Manadanudiyanaitthukoregalayum patho abdina? Oru na- oru namayayam am eduthukundhal kodha? Nam namidham kaanappadikindra anaitthukoregalame indha sadapurallil bahavan kuripadakoodiya indha amsangalkulay edho onr- onrudan inayindhadaanirukko. Adhanala precheneenbadu enga kaanappadikindradhendral? Manadanenkinranilela than precheneenbadu nama meelongi unarikindro. Yeah problem enna abdina? Manadanenkinranilela avandha perugada oru precheneenbadu unarakkoodiyathanme manadanadahindran. Adhalala the sadapurallil kaanappadu andha moondru andha moondru edhunneligalo manadanudiyah avanudiyavvaarvila edhunnelile badhikindran enginra karthi bahavan kuripadikindrar. Yeah manadanudiyelakoregalayum pathitron pathom pathon na sari? Idu indha amsangaloda namala relate panikamudiyam. Ah idu idu avandhu namandhu oru practical exercisea kodha the chapterla erkakkodiya idanaba thinkpanipakalakama thinkpanipathona ovor korigalame indha amsangalkulay namala avandhu relate panikamudiyam. Adhalal idu bahavanudiyandha chapteravandhu verum teeri minarcha kodhaadu idu avandhu lifeoda sammanthappatta ah andha unmegala than bahavaninga romba adipaday nilela oru eduthkaatikindrar. Manadanenkinranilela patho abdina? Avanavandhu oru varambukutpatta oru amipaha irundhalam sari. Anaal avan andha varambatra onrudi no pagudienbadu avan unandhrukkindran. Andha varambatra andha ellay kadanda andha anantamana oru amsam adhanudiyandha saaniththithi avan unar unandhrukkindran. Thandul adhanudiyandha undudalayum oru kaletchiyayum avan unarikindran eporudumme unarikindran. Avanukkondhu eporudumdu murumayana oru manadanukkondhu tripti ah adahimendru oru mananavandhu oru tripti kadekamendral? Onrui avan andha infinite avan finiteaha irundhalam sari avan ellay kadanda andha sakthiyay than adahavendum aladu andha sakthial than akiramikappadavendum. Indha irandhanilela than avanukkondhu andha tripti enbadu kittikindradhu. Enanral manadanenkinra oru nileyadaan indha anithijeevarasiyakalilim sari andha irayvanudiyasaaniththithi unanda oru jeevanaha manadan kaanappadikindran. Thanudiyandha vaarvin vaarvin saasvathathanme immortality. Adayavanna unandhavaar erikkindran adhey ponra aday adahiviruppadikindran manadan. Indha oru manadanudiyah ah physical, emotional, mental levels andha moondru nilegalilime the sadapurallilirukkakoodiya andha division. Adu avandhu badhikindradhu. Eppadi badhikindradhu enral? Mainavandhu the pirivu the pirivu enbadu ovor thanimandharam thanne oru thanipattamipaha karthiindran. Thanipattamippe enbadu edhaisaandhrukkindradhendral? The egoistic consciousness. Thanunarvandha unarvunilela saarunda thanipattamipaha than erikkindradhu. Aday saarunda oru manamaha erikkindradhu aday saarunda oru vaarvaha erikkindradhu aday saarunda oru udalaha erikkindradhu. The manadanukkeppadi indha guanamandhadienral? Adhanudiyam moolam indha sadapurallilirukkakoodiya andha division and struggle. Idu than avandhu idarkadipaday ka- moola karanamaha amayikindradhu. Indha periupattathanme than oru manadanudiyayerkyaana valachiyay valachikutthadayaaha erikkindradhu. Oru manadan udalnileli mattrurudal modelilirundhu veerupattu udalaha unarikindran. Adhalal enna nadakindradhendral? The law of attraction repel repulsion. Irandhu manadralakriyae oru eeepere padikindradhu illa verupere padikindradhu. Adhalal udalla enna nadakindradhendral? Eporudumme oru muranbadhum oru valiyayum vedanayum manadan unarikindran. Ovor thanipattu udal amipoom enanral udal amippe enbadu oru limited conscious force adu avandhu oru varambukkattu patta onarvun oru unarvunilein sakthi adhanudiyakoiptu than oru thanipattu udal enbadu. Adhalal matra idhey maari idhey madri matra varambukkutpatta andha amippagaludan avan thodravukullumbodhu oru manadan valiyayum vedanayum unarikindran. Adu maatharamla andha prabanjasaktikaludan yena prabanjasaktikalodhu than veerupattamipaha unarikindran. Unmaileya prabanjasaktikalodha avan onrupattavan anaal veerupattamipaha avan unarvadhal prabanjasakti the universal forces avigalin badhippe edhunneliaha avan unarikindran. Adhalal indha manadanenbahavan than avandhu indha badhippe adhimaha unarikindran. The sadapurallilirukkakoodiyandha division and struggle edhanudiyabadhippe manadan than avanudiyam moondru nilegalilim sari physical, emotional, mental level. Adhanudiyabadhippe adhimaha unarikindran endru bahavan inga kuripadikindrar. Adath iranduk pola.
Padikka sir?
Padigam madam.
The law of division also operates the emotional and sense mind. It brings the same reaction as that of a body but with the higher values grief and joy, love and hatred, oppression and depression. We experience these states either in terms of fulfillment or unfulfillment of our desires. Into the mind, the law of division brings into the ma- into the mind similar dualities. We do not arrive at the whole truth. It is pursued by error. We do not receive the true light. It is accompanied by doubt. All this means the denial and negation of such ananda which we feel cannot be overcome by us. Therefore, we are driven to the conclusion that this existence is purposeless and useless. Life must be abandoned in the end as a winged attempt, a colossal mistake with illusion of the spirit living within the body. This forms the whole basis of the pessimist theory of the world. One tends to look with optimism only at the worlds and states beyond this earthly existence.
The in the division and struggle. Adu avandhu moondru nilegalim badhikappaduvadai patho. Mudalnilela andha udalnilela badhikappaduvadai patho. Ovor ovor thanipattu udal amipoom thanipattamipaha iruppadhal mattra amippagalayavandhu oru thanak edhiraaha sayalpaduvadaa adhukaadu adhunarikindradhu. Adhanala adu badhippakkum badhippakkum ulagukulav badhippakkum utpadikindradhu enra karthapatho. Indha periupatta indha amsam enbadu oru manadanudiyah andha emotional and sense mind. Indha nileilim badhippe erpaditikindradhu. Idu avandhu oru same reactions thanipattamippagala oru udalirupadhanala angu vairvidamana oru edhun edhunmarayana vilavigal undhakindran. Indha emotional levella oru oyernilela andha badhippakal erpadikindran. Eppadi enral? Oru dukkam magichchi anbu veruppu adhey pola oppression and depression. Indha idumari oru edhunneligala edhunneligali oru manadanudiyay unarumayathil thotravikindradhu. Indha anubavangal edhanala erpadikindradhendral? Oru manadanudiyah aasegal nirevairumbodhu avanukkondhu oru oruvidamana oru unachiyay unarikindran. Adu nirevairaa adhupodhu vairuvamara edhunneliyanam Oruvidamana oru unarchi unarikindra, adu nirevera adu porudu, veeruvamara edurnelayana avan, una-unarchikke aalakeenra. Idhu vandhu onudiyah, Emotional levella itthaya bhaadhipai, enna karanamindral? Epurudeme manidhan vandhu, in the edhur mariana, Amssangalku, amssangalayen unarikindra, indral, Andh thannilirundhu mattrunray, veerunray pirivupattanelaile avan erpadaaha kaanappaduvadaal than, itthaya bhaadhipu kaavun ulaaakeenra. Onudiyah manonelailum siri, itthaya in the dualities, irumehal, Andh, adhanala, adhanuday bhaadhipu kaavun ulaaakeenra. In the ellanaitthime, avan pagadi-pagadiyaha than kandariyindra. Unmainodaya oru amshathi avanal muzumiyaha kaanamudivadilai, onudiyah, arivu epurudeme, Oru perikku udpatta than, arivu sailpappadukindradu. Andh unmayana, andh unmainavelluchthi avanal adayamudivadilai, epurudeme, oru veluchamindral, adhanudan, Inayindhu andh eeerulum than avanakidukidakindradu. The division yendbadhu, the irumehal dualities yendbadhu, oru manidhanudaya, Unarvinnalayim, unarchi unarvinnalayim bhaadikkindradu. Oru manidhanudaya, Manonelayim bhaadikkindradu. In the, Manidhan vandhu, manidhan nelaile, the bhaadhipugale, meelongi unarikindran yendbadhi patho. In the bhaadhipugale unarvadunmulaamaaha avan enna, uh, enna ninakindran indral, Ivagale ellami vandhu, andh unmayana amsamana, andh sachchidananda, Adhananudaya marupahaum, adhanudaya edurnelayakalahaum than avan unarikindra. In the edurnelayal than odakatiir kaanappadukindra. Oru sarasari manidhanenakindra, inanakindranindral, in the edurnelayakali, Elirundhu thanaal mealamudiyadu, enginra karthi unarikindra. The olaka vaavvil, Avanal, in the edhur edhuraana nelaicalile irundhu, sachchidanadaavunudaya edurnelayakali irundhu thanaal, Vidupattu meera mudiyadu, adhalala, vaavu yendbadhu oru nokkamattradu, oru payanatrathu, Enginra karthi avan, Manidhal eduthukolikindra. Andh, andh karthi, andh, andh nelaikya, andh, andh, avari ennum nelaikya avan thallaapadukindra. Adhalala, vaarkai porappanipadhu, vaavu yendbadhu oru, oru veenanamayarchi, Oru maabirm thavaru, Adhey pola, in the maypurulindh udalil, uh, irupadu yendbadhu, Oru mayathothram, adhil unmai kadeyadu, enginra edhur mariana sindhanakalaka avan aattapadukindra. Idhu ellami vandhu bahwan enna kuripadikindrarindral, idhu vandhu, the pessimist theory of the world. Olakati kuritha, oru edhur mariana sindhanay, sindhanayenudaya adipaday than itthaya vaadangal, enr bahwan kuripadikindra. Enandhal, in the pessimist, in the vaark, in the olaka vaavvai kuritha edhur mariana sindhanay, sindhanay kondavarkal, Epurudeme avagale enna ninakindrarakalindral, in the puivavaavvai poruthavarekum, oru manidhanakke, Vimoshanam yendbadhu kadeyadu, the puivavaavvai kadanda andh meel ulakangalil than, Oru manidhanakke vimoshanam irikkindradu, enginra karthi avagale kondavarkala irikkindrarakal. Anal idhu unmai illaiyendbadhu bahwaninudaya, Uh, karthu. In the, in the karthukka adipaday karanamvandhu, enna karanamindral, manidhan sandikakkoodiya, Andh sadapurulinal erpadutappattan, the division and struggle, adu than karanam. Adathairanduk polanam.
According, according to them,
Ah.
Uh, according to them, the principle of division is not proper to matter, but to mind. Matter is only an illusion of mind, mind brings its own rule of division and ignorance into the matter. Therefore, mind can find itself only within this illusion. It can travel between the three terms of the divided existence it has created, that is body, matter, life and mind. It cannot find there the unity of spirit or the truth of the spiritual existence. It is true that principle of division in matter can be only a creation of the divided, divided mind. It is the mind which had descended into matter and had precipitated itself into the material existence. Because the material existence has no self-being. It is only a form created by an all-dividing life force, which works out the conceptions of an all-dividing mind. The dividing mind works out being within parathyse substance or satth into the appearances of the ignorance, inertia and division of matter. By doing so, the mind has lost and imprisoned itself in a dungeon of its own building.
Thank you, thank you. In the, Bahwan vandhu romba padipadiyaha namala namayathisalikindra, enna, enna kurigindrarindral? Spirit and matter. Mudal enna kurinar, spirit and matter, ivayirandame edhur edhuraana nelaical kadeyadu. Idhellaame, oraypurulinnudaya irandumonekal, substance, two ends of the same matter abdin koruna, abdin, appriyendru kurinar. Sadapurulil kaanakkoodiya sikka, sadapurul thottruvikum sikkal, ennamindral, the ignorance, inertia, division and struggle enr, Kurinar. Adathu patho abdeena, idhellaame vandhu, enga vandhu bhaadhipu, enthenelaile bhaadhipu, ellanelaicalim bhaadhipu irikkindradu, anay enga vandhu the bhaadhipu, Meelongi unarappadukindradu, patho abdeena, adu manidhanenkinna nelaile than in the bhaadhipu, moonra, in the moonra bhaadhipugaleme, Yaar, inga, idhu, idhu vandhu, adhigapachamaha unarikindrarakalindral, manidhanenbavandhan unarikindra. Ena avan, avan, manidhanenkinna nelaile than, manam valachyadhananelaile irikkindradu, vaavu valachyadhananelaile irikkindradu, The bhaadhipai avan unarikindra. In the nelaikavandhaparam, manidhanen, uh, manidhanunudaya, manidhanudaya sindhanay epriimariyindradhendral, in the edhunnelayakalava, edhurgollumbodu, enna ninakindranindral? The olaka vaavvilirukindra varikum, the olaka vaavvai yendbadhu, in the, in the, in the sikkalakalirundhu vedibadave mudiyadu, ahyal, Oru manidhanukke vandhu unmaylaye vidugalam yendbadhu, pirakkavendamindral, in the olaka vaavvilirukkamudiyadu, yedu veerenggo irikkindradu. Enginra, oru karthu, manidhanukke thondekindradu, idhuve adipadayana karthaha, The pessimist theory, vaavvai, olaka vaavvai kuritha edhur mariana sindhanay konda, tatvareedhiana, andh bodanegal, Avayalim ivari, itthaya karth, avagaleunudaya bodanegalim, itthaya karthegalin adipadigal than amayindana. Ipavandhu, Edhala vandhu avagale ninakiranga, adhitan bahwan kuripadikindra, yen vandhu, idhu, the pessimist, In the olaka vaavvai kuritha edhur mariana sindhanayunudayaavarkal, uh, in the mayavada, mayavada karthekal, Uh, andh adhuvaythins, ivagallana enna karanathnalala, in the olakati kurithu, edhur mariana andh karthi kondirudharakal. Andh, andh, aspectadha bahwan vandhu, ingoor rendumone pointsil viverikindra. Viverithuvittu, adhyam, adhyam, eprioru thavaraana oru karthu, adharukunmaylaye, adhukusolution enna yendbadhi, irudiyaha avakurigindra. So, modallapatho, sadapurul, sadapurularku thottruvikakoodiya, the sikkalakal, Adhuvay, manidhanukke erpadukakoodiya, andh sikkalakalapatho, adhanala, manidhanukke vandhu enna, oru frustration varikindradu, vaavvai kuritha frustration, olakati kavathu frustration varikindradu. Idhakuritha edhur mariana sindhanayal, pessimist theory, Uh, urvahikindra. Adu evayya entha adipadayil urvahina, ana avukunmayenakthiirvayenna yendbadhu, bahwaninga arromba, vikum aragaha velakakindra. In the, Division, pirivu yendbadhu, sadapurulil kaanappattalam kodha, The pessimist, the tatv, in the edhur mariana sindhanay, avagale enna kurinarakalindral, adhuvaythins, mayavathins, ivagallana enna kurinarakalindral? The pirivu yendbadhu, sadapurulil, To, sadapurulikk, uriyadu alla, adhuk, adhuk unmaylaye adhanudaya moalam edhuvendral, mind, enr kurinarakal. Sadapurul vandhu oru manadinudaya oru mayathothram, manadinaal erpadutappattavaru mayathothram. Manam enna sagindradhendral, adhanam, manag, manam enr, manam, andh pirivukuttatta thanudaya vidhi, Ariyamiyay saarunda adhanudaya vidhi, in the irandu vidhikalime, sadapurulinnmeedhu, sadapurulikkul konduvarikindradu. Adhalala, in the, sah, in the mind, manam yendbadhu, Than thottruvithanandh mayavalakul, epurudeme irikkindradu, adhalala, manam vandhu, Adu thottruvithanandh sadapurul, matter, life and mind. In the moonra amaypugalkulli, amaypugalkul than, adu payanikavendum. Adhalala, unmaylaye angavandhu, ang, andh, unity of the spirit, maypurulay saarunda, andh orumay thanmey, Manadinaal adayamudiyadu, manamindral, in the manidha vaavvu, in the puivil, manidhan vaavum vaavvu, Idhil irukkumvarikum, in the otrumay kittaadu, enginra karthi kondirundharakal. Bahwan adharukkenna oru velakam tharikindrarindral? Adharukmeel bahwan velakakindra, bahwan enna kurigindrarindral? Unmaydan, sadapuruldan, sadapurulil kaanakkoodiya andh pirivu yendbadhu, Oru pirivupattamanam, pirivupattamanamindral, enna arthamabdeena, manadinudaya andh moalam edhun patho abdeena, adhimanam, supermind. Adhilirundhu pirivupattamanam, adu enna sagindradhendral, anaitthime, oru pirivinay kuttattadhan adu urvakakindradu. Adhalala, bahwan enna kuripadikindrarindral, adu unmaydan, sadapurulikaanappadik, kaanappadakkoodiya andh pirivu, division yendbadhu, manidhanal urvakappattadu than. Enandhal, manamindrinra, andh amaypah, namayerkanave pathirkko, the manamindrinra amaypah, andh manam than, In the, oneray urvakavendamindral, Oru thittam thayavapadukindradu, oru thittaa illa abdeena, edhimay urvakamudiyadu. So, in the prabanjam, in the sadapurul anaitthim thottruvip, thottruvikka vendi, andh thittam enggu urvahnadhendral? In the manam, manam, manamindrinra, bahwan capital letterslakuripadikindra. Andh supermind, adhilirundhu pirinduvandh manam, Adu enna sagindradhendral? In the vaavu yendginra satthiinmulaamaaha, life force, chachach, chitsaththiinmulaamaaha, Sadapurulai, adu thottruvikindradu, urvakakindradu, avar urvakambodu, enna sagindradhendral? Avayalay pirivinay kuttattamaypugalaha urvakakindradu, manam urvakakindradu, unmaylaye adu marikadeyadu, manamavavu parkindradu. Adhitan ninga bahwan kuripadikindra, anal, nampa pathirkonamba, ellathukka adhi adipaday moala karanam, sachchidananda, adhilirundhu velipadum, supermind. Adhanudaya sailbadugala than manam, vaavvinudaya satthi ellamay velipadukindradu, adhalala, Manam mathram urvapa, urvakkavadu kadeyadu, manam vandhu oru moala srishthikatha kadeyadu. Anal, manam, in the sadapurulavandhu epri, epriyerekam kondu, sadapurulil yerekam kondu, mul marainthi irikkindradu. Enandhal, sadapurulikindra, oru moala, uh, oru self-being, adu kadeyadu, adu manadinaal vaavvin satthiinmulaamaaha urvakappattadu. In the manadinaal urvakappattadhanala, in the sadapurulil kaanappadukoodiya, in the vidhigal, ariyami, mandanilay, division of matter, ignorance, inertia, division of matter. Iveyellame, in the manam enginra oru principle, dividing mind, adhanala urvakappattadu. Urvakappattanandh amaypakkul, manam thanne sareipaduthikondu uladu, idhay bahwan vandhu, idhu unmaydan enr, otthuk, oetrukolikindra. Anal, bahwan idhaidhaidh, idhaidh etrukollam marikindrarindral? Idharukkalam adipaday karanamvandhu, manam mathiramalla abdeengar. If, the, adath, uh, adathairandupadikalanamba, padichanamba thirinchukalava.
Padikittumasen?
Ah, pading madam.
If it is true that the dividing mind is the first principle of creation, Then it would lead to the conclusion that mind is the ultimate attainment possible in the creation. We find that our mental being struggles with life and matter without result. This goes on endlessly as a fruitless cycle. Mental being must be the last and highest word of cosmic existence. If we subscribe to this view, then mind is the ultimate and the last principle on this earth. Man cannot go beyond his present stage. She Arabindo says, mind is not the creator of this world. On the contrary, it is the immortal and the infinite spirit that has veiled itself in the dense robe of material substance. It works there by the supreme creative power of supermind. It permits the divi- divisions of mind and the rule of the matter only as initial conditions for a certain evolutionary part play of the one in the many. If that is the case, then the emergence of the conscious out of, sorry, consciousness out of the apparently inconscient must have another and completer term, that is, from matter to life to mind and finally to supermind. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, in the, in the karthikal romba mukkiamana karthikal, adu, ena bahwan vandhu irudiyaha sellakodi karthikal ellame, Adu than ondu thirvayak tharikindradu, the naught of the matter, andh sikkalakal, the sikkalakaloda, namamunidha, namva, idhalaidh thirvay kadeyada, enginra namadukilviki, Bahwaninudaya in the karthikal vandhu, thirvayalikindradu, thanal, nambaromboor, idharu, aarama, nambo, manadala vaangikitu, sindikavendiyay oru, mukkiamana, armiyana karthikal. Idhile modallainna sol, enna kurigindrarindral, edhur mariana sindhanay, the pessimist theory enna sunnanga abdeena? In the sadapurulla kaanakkoodiya andh pirivu yendbadhu, manadinaal urvakappattadu. Manam enginra, manam vandhu, sadapurul enginra oru mayathothrathu unrupanney, angavandhu oru pirivinay kuudpatti, adharukul olakamindrinra amaypahy erpadukindu uladu. Manidhan vandhu ipuruderekkakoodiya nelaay, manam saandhanelaile irikkindra. Adhalala, in the manam saarunda vaavvu, in the nelaile, Idhu vandhu oru, kirkamudiyadu prachchana, the olakatillirukkavarekum, the olaka vaavvil, Manam, manidhan irikkindra varikum, in the prachchani kithirvay kadeyadu, enginra karthi avagale kondirundharakal. Anal, bahwaninga enna, uh, kurigindrarindral? Manam yendbadhu, itthaya oru pirivinay kuttatta, andh sadapurulil, andh vidhiyay, manam thottruvikindradu yendbadhu unmaydan. Anal, Manam yendbadhu, in the srishthi, Sadapurulai thottruvipadhu, in the srishthiila, manam vandhu moala karanam illai abdeengar, first principle of creation, manam illai abdeengar. Avagale enna sunnanga, manam than ondu first principle of creation, abdeeng sunnanga, anale idhu manidhanukke, alenidhu viduvekve mudiyadu, In the idhile, in the manidhanenkinna nelaile irukkavarekum, manidhanukke vandhu vimoshaname kadeyadu, enr avagale kurinarakal. Bahwan enna kurigindrarindral? In the pirivinay ku, pirivinay kuttattam manam yendbadhu, in the oneray srishthi urvakkum, andh vidhi, Adhuyvandhu, adu thirmanipadhu illai, enginra karthi bahwan kuripadikindra. Appadi oru, appadi oru nelaay yendbadhu, unmayenravaitukundal, manam than anaitthime, oru, Uh, moala kartas, anaitthrishrishthikkum moala kartahaava amayindarkindradu enr karthi namyetrukundal. Enna mudivukka nam varikindramindral? Manam than, oru manidhan, uyyar, adhigapachamaha ettakkoodiya nelaay, idhilirundhu manidhan adathinelaikki salaamudiyadu, enginra karthukkavarekindro. Enandhal, manam than anithkumay moala karanam, sanithrishrishthikkum manam than moala karanam, enr namyetrukundal. Ipav manamindrinna nelaile manidhanirikkindra, ahyal, idhikadandhu manidhan salaamudiyadu, idhu vandhu oru logical thinking, idhu, the karthi idu vandhu oru logical thinking idhakarthikka nam varikindrom enandral manidan vandhu manav neli manav neli le ah the vadvinadum sari the sadapurulilum sari avan poradikondu than irukindhar idu vandhu thodrantthi andha poradham narandhukondu irukindradhu oru idhikkandu oru mudivay illa thodrantthi poradham narandhukondu irukindradhu adhalal intha manamsarundha intha vadhu enbadhu than manidan ettakkoodiya oru adhigappacha neli intha oru karthi vandhu avargal kurinarkal intha karthanaambay etru kondrom abdina enna idhanal nam idhanodiyad idai ottiyakarthaanam eday nam endha mudivukku varikindram enrhal ipparkakoodiya manidan manam idu than vandhu oru uyandapacha neli idai thaandi manidan intha puvil irukkarvarikum puvivaadvil idai thaandi manidan sella muddiyadhu sorunga korappanal manidanuki tarppodu avan vaadakkoodiya andha neli ilirundhu vimoshanam kadaadhu enandral manamsandhaneli ilirukindhar pirivinay kuttputtarikindhar idhilirundhu manidanaaduththi neli kisella muddiyadhu aniththame avanodiy manadinaal manadinaal thoottravikkappattavai intha neli ilirundhu aduththi neli kisella muddiyadhu idu than intha edhirmarayana sindhanegal pessimist thiary intha mayavadigal kuriyakarthu idai bahavan marikindhar enna enna karanathana marikindharindral manam enbadhu intha olakathay thoottravipadhu kadaadhu abdingar mind is not the creator of this world abdingar appanay edu vandhu onda olakathay srishthi srishthithadhu nam theli vaga namma pathirkrom sachidhananda than intha olakathay adimanathin moollamaga srishthithadhu manam enbadhu srishthithadhu manam enbadhu ah oru oru moollamana oru srishthikatha kadaadhu intha sadapurul enbandha enrakporvaykul edu vandhu thanne maray edu vandhu maraindu uladhu enrhal intha infinite spirit daraya thanmey konda the parampurul intha sadapurul enginra oru oru adrathyana oru porvaykul adu maraindu uladhu sadapurulay oru porvaya marithukondu edu ulle irukindradhu enrhal intha mayapurul irukindradhu idaitan bahavan kuripadikindhar adu yevvar edan moollamaga intha sadapurulil adhanodiyasailayatrikindradhu enrhal the supermind adimanam adhananodiyad oru thoottravikkum saktiaga creative power oru thoottravikkum uruvakkum saktiaga adu intha sadapurulinul adu vandhu adu vandhu sailatrik kondu irukindradhu ahyal intha manam uruvakkum intha pirivinaygal adhe pola intha sadapurul unno uruvakkum intha vidihal intha arayami intha mandanilay intha pirivinay intha vidihalellamay intha supermind adimanam adhanal anumadikka pattasailbadugala ah irukindana endakarthi bahavan kuripadikindhar edhanal anumadikka pattiyay en en mandu itthagya arayami intha mandanilay intha division itthagya amay intthagya amsamgalay sadapurulirukul en intha adimanam supermind anumadikke bhandam enrhal adukva bahavan enna karanam kurikindharindral the parinamavallachiila vandhu intha onrahay irkakoodiya andha amaypu palvaraa palvayaraa irkakoodiya andha olakhaneli il intha intha neli ilavandhu oru parinamavallachiil ah thanne edupaduthikullum oru amsamaga than itthagya neli eerpaduthappattadhu enrakarthi bahavan kuripadikindhar idu vandhu oru edayipattan neli parinamavallachiil oru uyarsaktiyal thoottravikkappatta edayipattam samgal than intha ignorance inertia the division the moondru nilegalum oru uyarsaktiyal eerpaduthappattavaidhan adhalavandhu nige bahavan enna kurikindharindral intha velipadu the onarvunnelayin velipadu vandhu adhanodiyad oru onarvattan neli ilirundhu andhi velipadu thanne velipadu thanne andhi velipadu eerpadikindradhu adu vandhu ittharppodu ulan neli vandhu oru manamsandhaneli ilirukindradhu idhar kaduththan neli vandhu irudiyaga the adimanathin moollamaga thanne velipaduthikullum ahyal bahavan inge enna kuripadikindharindral manamsarundha intha pirivinay pirivinay kuttputta amaypu enbadhu oru tharkaliyadu neli irudhinelay alla manidan manadakadandhu andha adimana neli kisella morudu intha nilegal maarubadam endakarthi bahavan kuripadikindhar so bahavan vandhu marikindhar athagya edhanelyana karthikale bahavan marikindhar adutthadu pola adutthay irandu
Padikitum asan
Ah padig madam
Padikitum asan
Padig
The emergence of the supramental being would liberate the mind from the naught of its divided existence the individualization of mind would be merely a useful subordinate subordinate action of the all embracing supermind the supramental being would liberate the life also from the naught of its divided existence the individualization of life would be merely a useful subordinate action of the conscious force life would no more be a divided existence separated from one another the supramental being would also liberate the bodily existence from the present law of death division and mutual devouring eating it would use individualization of body merely as a useful subordinate term of the one divine conscious existence such such a body would be made for the service for the joy of the infinite in a finite individual
Adutthadu point ni padichirga adu related than adutthapoint
Okay okay the spirit also would be free through free through it
Free though it
Yes sir yes sorry the spirit also would be free though it would be a supreme occupant of a form the matter would be its changing robe yet the spirit would be consciously immortal in it man would be the inhabitant of this worldly existence through whom the transformation of the mental into the supramental would take place
Thank you madam thank you
Thank you sir
Okay thank you the previous oru moondu paragraph la bahavan vandhu romba intha naught of the matter idhala vandhu manadinaal uruvakka pattha oru amaypu manadina manadinaal urva manadinaal uruvakka pattha oru sikkal manadinaal uruvakka patthandha sikkalnala manidantaan irkakoodiya neli vandhu manamsandhaneli ilirukkadana irupadhanala intha neli ilirundhu manidan enginra oru amaypu ikkavandhu vimoshanam kadaadhu intha olakathil irukkarvarikum intha sikkalayendhu oru manidan vidupada muddiyadhu enandral ivay ellamay manadinaal urva mind manadinaal uruvakka patthudhu manadina onray onray uruvakka manadinaal uruvakka patthudhanala idhikkadandhane neli kisella morudhan teeruvu kadaikum as long as mind irukkarvarikum idhikke teeruvu kadaadhu enbadhu edhernelayvadham anal bahavan inge enna kurikindharindral nam kaanakkoodiya andha edhirmarayana amsamgal ellamay vandhu manadinaal uruvakka patthalam kodha adu oru karanathir kaha manadinum manadinodiyad manadinum meelaana amsamana oru andha sachidhananda adhanodiyad oru uruvakkum saktiyanadha supermind enay anithirkkumay moolakaranam sachidhananda than sachidhananda adhanodiyad oru uruvakkum sakti creative power of supermind adhanal eerpaduthappatta amsamgal than intha manad manad intha ah pirivinay kuttputtam samgal divisions of mind adhe pola intha sadapurularkakoodiya intha edhernelayana amsamgalana intha ignorance inertia division ivay ellam patham abdina verum manadinaal uruvakka padavillu bahavan enna kurikindharindral manidulum meelaana amaypana intha sachidhananda thanodiyad intha uruvakkum sakti creative power supermindin moollamaga oru karanathir kaha eerpatta amaypugal than intha edhernelayana amsamgal enna karanam abdina intha vandhu parinamavallachiile onrahay irkakoodiya andha orumay the one egam adu vandhu one vandhu palmohamaa kaachyalikindradhu palmohamaa irkakoodiyaadhu parinamavallachiile mellemellem valarundhu meelokki ezighindradhu andha consciousness vandhu ulirkakoodiya andha onarvuneli melemellem velipadikindradhu onarvattan neli ilirundhu melemellemellem vadhu manam manadakadandhu adimanam intha neli kivallevalle velipadikindradhu intha parinamavallachiin sailbattila vandhu oru karanathir kaha uruvakka pattha oru tharkaliyadu neli than intha ignorance inertia division of matter enbadhu bahavaninode karthi adu unmay adhanala manidanukkandu vimoshanam illa abdingar thavur enbadhu bahavanode karthi manidan vandhu andha manadakadandhu adimana neli kisella morudu manidanodiyad manam enbadhu intha divided existence pirivupatta intha vadvin amaypulirundhu adu viduvikka padam appan vandhu enna abdingar bahavan ipparkakoodiya thanamrodiyad manam vandhu oru pirivinay kuttputta manamaga sailpadikindradhu avan adhanaradha bulaprachani varikindradhu appodu yappodu sailpadu appo andha manam oru thiruvurumattham anandhaneli il adimanathinaal thiruvurumattham anandhaneli il manam vandhu appidi vattu oru amsamaga irukkum enrhal adu vandhu the adimanathiyad adimanathiyad tharuviyad oru thunayamay paha arkam manidanodiyasailbadugala aniththame the supermind supermind adhay tharuviyad oru thunayamay paha than adhanodiyasailbadugal amayum number one so that nambapatho manidanodiyad manam vadhu manidanodiyad udal ivay moondrumay tanipattam amaypugalaga irukindana ivay moondrumay intha sadapurulay sarundha intha moondru vidihal avigalak kuttputtadan oru varambuk kuttputtan neli il baadikka padikindana abdingar padtho so manidan vandhu intha thiruvurumattham anandhaneli le enna nadakkum enrhal ivay moondrumay thiruvurumattham adaimenrakarthi bahavan kuripadikindhar mind vandhu first vandhu adimanathitharuviyad adhanodiyad adimanathitharuviyad adhanodiyathunayamay paha than adhanodiyasailbadu amindarkal adu maathram alla intha adimanam vadhu vandhu tarppodu ulan the pirivupatta andha amsattilirundhu aday viduvikko appai appidi vadhu sailbadu abdina adu vandhu andha chitsakti andha consciousness force sachidhananda anodiyandha sakti adhanodiyathunayamay paha sailbadu ippa vandhu oru pirivupattan neli il vadhu sailpadikindradhu vadvin sailbadugala amindarkindana appodu vandhu andha sachidhanandavinodiyad andha chitsakti adhanodiyad oru thunay sailbadaga than vadhu amindarkum adhalal oru vadhu mattoruvadhu oru pirivupattan neli ilirukkaadhu appodu vandhu ellamay vandhu oru oringinaittha oru amaypaha irukko adu maathram alla udal vandhu tanithanamay paha sailpadikindradhu adhal moollamaga intha attraction repulsion the valiyum vedanayum edhirkolikidradhu enbadai patho intha adimanam enna sayum enrhal intha udalsarundha vadhu vandhu tarppodu ulan andha maranam enginra vidhi pirivuyenginra vidhi onray onrue abaharithal onray onrue unavaha unudhal enginra vidhi ivagaliyallam intha intha vidhigalil irundhelam intha pidil intha vidhigalin pidilirundhu adimanam udalay viduvikkum enrakarthi bahavan kuripadikindhar appodu vandhu udal vandhu oru tanipattamay paha illamal intha conscious existence sachidhanandavinodiyandha sat adhanodiyad oru thunayam samaga adu sailbadum abdingar bahavan manam enbadhu adimanathinodiyasailbadaga arkam vadhu enbadhu sachidhanandavinodiyandha chitsakti adhanodiyad oru thunayamay paha sailbadu oru manidanodiyad udal enbadhu sachidhanandavil irkakoodiya andha conscious existence sat adhanodiyad oru thunayam samaga sailbadu sailbattu evaar adu sailbadu enrhal intha parampurulinodiyad oru sevekku magichyaana sevekku kuttputta oru amaypaha oru manidanodiyad manam angusailbadu enghindra karthi bahavan kuripadikindhar adu maathram alla manam manam patho vadhu patho udal patho manidanodiyad spirit adu mandhu oru pradhanamana oru ah amaypaha oru manidanodiyad vadivathirkali sailbadu yappodu yevvar irukindradhu enrhal oru manidanodiyad aanma enbadhu oru manidanodiyad manam udal vadhu itthagya amsamgalal marakkappattu thirekkuppin sailbadikindradhu pradhanamana pradhanamana oru amaypaha irupadi illa anal the adimanathik kuttputtan neli il sailbadu morudu oru manidanodiyad aanmaavum oru muttrilam vandhu oru liberated state oru vidupattan neli il bahavan inge enna kuripadikindharindral a supreme occupant of a form oru vadivathir kulla than arkam anal adhanodiyad oru pradhanamana oru amsamaga andhu sailbadu inge yappodu yappodu sailbadu oru maraindu ulan maraindu ulan oru marakkappattavara amsamaga reekindradhu anal appodu vandhu oru pradhanamana velipattam samaga sailbadu enrakarthi bahavan kuripadikindhar udal vandhu oru udai ponru thanne thanne maattrikullam anal the maattrikullam intha udal idhar kulla vandhu andha aanma evaar irukkum enrhal thanney thanney nangu unandhulla consciously immortal in it oru ariyatanmey konda nila oru amsamaga angusailbadu intha manidanenbavan vandhu the olakavadhkal ah appidi pattha oru jevanaha angus ah thanodiyavadhkeenadathu vandhal manidanin moollamaga than intha manam enginra amsam vandhu muttrilamaga adimanathinaal thiruvurumattham nadibaram so adhanala manam manidanenbavan manadakondam manademanaday manam enginra amsatthi kondavanaha irundhalam kodha andha manadum avanodiyad manam enbadhu muttrilum intha adimanathinaal thiruvurumattham anandhaneli il manidan intha olakavadvil kaanappaduwan enghindra andha moondru thiruvurumatrungalim bahavan kuripadikindhar intha thiruvurumattham nandhappinbadu intha sadapurulikaanakkoodiya daniththam samgalam vandhu muttrilamaga marandhi idhum enghindra karthi bahavan kuripadikindhar irdyaa oru kadasi irandu paragraph la enna sadapurulay enna nadakkum abdingar kuripadikindhar adha inavapakla
Padikitum asan
Padig madam
Our present view of matter based on our limited senses and its laws represents the relation between sense and substance as a only relation possible we cannot take a view that if other relations could be possible they must be sought on higher plane than on the earthly existence such an approach would rule out the ultimate terrestrial possibility of divinization of matter there are other states even of matter itself there is an ascending series of the divine gradation of substance there is possibility that the material being will transfigur itself through acceptation of a higher law than its form she arabindo concludes this chapter by saying that the laws that operate at the level of matter are not permanent they are subject to change thank you sir
Thank you madam thank you ippo nambavandhu intha bahavan inge meele ennak meele eday kurikindharindral ultimate enna enna nadakkupohindradhu enbadhu bahavan kuripadikindhar enna enna nadakkupohindradhu enrhal irudiyaga